Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Lackawanna County Commissioners Meeting. We're going to start off by saying the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'd like to invite up to the podium Joe Bacasa, who's going to lead us in the pledge. He's currently serving as the Financial Officer for the American Legion Post 306 in Taylor. Joe served for five years as a Corporal in the United States Marine Corps from 1998 to 2003. During his time, Joe served in the Afghanistan and Operation Iraqi Freedom campaigns, and he currently lives in Scranton. Thanks for doing this, Joe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, before we get into the meeting, I just want to thank the Borough of Music officials for having us here this morning, specifically Mayor Bob Bennie, Marilyn French, the Council President, Charles Maher, the Vice President of Council, John Tilbury, Councilperson Jane Sterling, on council, Tim Healy, Ashley, going to mess up her last name.
Aldubayan.
Aldubayan, there you go. And John Pliss and Paul Thomas, who's done a great job so far as the Borough Administrator, John Brazil, the Solicitor. We have the Fire Chief here, Chuck Malinaro, who does a great job, and the Police Chief here in Music, Rick Genesco. So, thank you very much for all of the hard work that you do here in Music, and I think the county in Music has a great relationship, and we'd like to keep that going. Also, I forgot to do this in the beginning. If everybody would please stand for a minute, I'd like a moment of silence for Bill Fox, who passed away. Bill Fox was a former school director in the city of Scranton. He also was the tax collector, and he currently is the, was the Chief of Staff for State Representative Kyle Donahue. He tragically passed away last week, and a lot of people in the county know him. He's a great guy, good friend of mine. So if we could just have a moment of silence for Bill Fox. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last Commissioners Meeting.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the minutes have been approved. Now is the opportunity for the public to address the Board on Agenda Items only. Would anyone like to discuss any of the Agenda items? No? Okay. First up is Ordinance 299.
Ordinance 299, this is our first reading establishing a county demolition fund. An ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania pursuant to Act 87 of 1982, as amended, establishing a county demolition fund, imposing a fee to be collected by the Lackawanna County Recorder of Deeds on recorded deeds and mortgages, and providing for the severability, repeal, or ineffective date. Whereas, the Recorder of Deeds Fees Laws, Act 87 of 1982, established fees for the services of recording of deeds. And whereas, the Kamala of Pennsylvania Legislature has enacted Act 152 of 2016, amending Act 87, to allow the Board of Commissioners to create a demolition fund for the express purposes of removing blighted property within the county. And whereas, the amendment also permits the Board of Commissioners to authorize the Recorder of Deeds to collect a fee of up to $15 for each deed or mortgage that is recorded. And whereas, the county commissioners of Lackawanna County believe it to be in the best interests of residents of the county to create and authorize a demolition fund for blighted properties in Lackawanna County. Let it be hereby ordained and enacted by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County pursuant to its authority under Pennsylvania Act 87 of 1982, as amended by Act 152 of 2016, as follows. That within the ordinance may be referred to herein and elsewhere as a demolition fund ordinance. Effective as of the final adoption of this ordinance, a Lackawanna County demolition fund shall be established by the Lackawanna County Treasurer pursuant to Act 152. Effective as of December 1st, 2025, which is not less than 90 days after the effective date of this ordinance, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners authorizes and directs the Lackawanna County Recorder of Deeds to collect a fee in the amount of $15 from each and every deed and mortgage recorded in their office. Each and every document shall be subject to the said fee of the amount of $15. Any and all funds collected by the Lackawanna County Recorder of Deeds pursuant to this ordinance shall be promptly deposited by the Lackawanna County Recorder of Deeds into a designated fund for the exclusive purposes of the Lackawanna County Demolition Fund. Funds deposited and maintained in the Lackawanna County Demolition Fund shall be administered by the Lackawanna County Land Bank. The effective date of this ordinance shall become effective as of December 1st, 2025. We have our second reading on August 20th, which we'll vote on.
Very good. And here to speak on that is our Director of Economic Development and Planning Krista Magnata.
Thank you, Commissioner. Act 152 is an ordinance to address blight. This act incorporates a fee of $15 for each deed or mortgage recorded. The collected fee will be channeled into a dedicated county demolition fund exclusively earmarked for demo of blighted properties in the county, and as was stated, the land bank would be in control of that. Just to give an example, as of December 3rd of 2024, 26 other Pennsylvania counties have implemented this demolition fund. And if we were to go off the 2024, both deeds and mortgages recorded, this fund would have $174,105 in it. So as you can see, it's a significant amount of money to help us address blight within the county. And, you know, and this is also no cost to the county.
Very good. Any questions for Director Magnata? I just have a couple of comments on this. So this is another step forward in our continued effort to revitalize each community throughout Lackawanna County. We're implementing the first ever dedicated county demolition fund. So what does this mean for our neighborhoods, and what does this mean for all of you down here in Music? It means that we finally have a sustainable, targeted way to eliminate blighted and abandoned properties, properties that not only drag down home values, but can be magnets for crime, safety hazards, and disinvestment. Every dollar that's collected, and we're projecting somewhere in the area of $150,000 to start, will go directly into demolition efforts to clear out dangerous dilapidated structures and make room for new possibilities, whether it's green space, new development, or simply peace of mind for the families that live nearby. So for Music, and I know when I was on council in Scranton, in each neighborhood, there's always one home that you look at when you are walking or driving down the street that is a problem. It's an eyesore, it can't be rehabilitated, it needs to be torn down, but the local boroughs, townships, and municipalities don't always have the funds to be able to do that. So what this is going to do is help boroughs like Music have the wherewithal to tear down these problem properties, and we'll have more information in the next few weeks when we develop actually the application process and what that looks like and how Music, Taylor, Old Forge, other boroughs can apply. Correct, Krista?
That is correct, yes. Everybody is, has the opportunity to apply for these funds for any of the homes that are blighted.
Okay, very good.
And I think once they're torn down, too, isn't there a lien, and then it gets replenished after?
No, there is not. The actual goal for this is to actually take, take properties, take liens off, not to put them on. So it would become a land bank property, which means that it would be available for sale. But if we were to put liens on it, it would actually deter from us being able to sell that property, because right now, a lot of land bank properties are for $500, and we can't even sell those. So if we were to put a lien on that as well, it would likely negatively impact us being able to sell those properties.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And the next reading will be at our next Commissioners Meeting. If anyone wants to come to the next meeting, it's going to be at the Government Center. If you have any comments on that, feel free. Okay, next up is Resolution 25-0190.
Approving the current payables. Be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. From the Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers 389011 through 389590 inclusive totaling Electronic fund transfers including all payroll accounts totaling $6,427,058.7.
Thank you, I'll entertain- And a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0189.
This is approving a local economic revitalization tax assistant property in the city of Scranton. Whereas, the Scranton Housing Authority in Hilltop Heights LP has requested the County of Lackawanna to grant a tax exemption for certain improvements to be constructed on the property owned and located at 900 Saginaw Street in the city of Scranton and approximately 24.6 acres. Whereas, pursuant to the LERTA, the city of Scranton adopted Council File Number 50 on December 3rd, 2018, and held meetings to define the boundary of the area within the city of Scranton in accordance with the procedures set forth in the act. And whereas, pursuant to LERTA, the city of Scranton adopted Council File Number 30 on July 30th, 2024, amending the procedural provisions and to adjust the application and exemption examples. And whereas, the Scranton School District adopted a resolution on December 19th, 2018, granting tax exemption to the defined area identified by the city of Scranton as the entire, the whole city of Scranton, excuse me. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County acting pursuant to LERTA and the act likewise desire to provide the properties described herein the LERTA application as Exhibit B with a tax exemption as set forth pursuant to LERTA. The following PIN number, 16718-030-009, approximately 24.6 acres in the city of Scranton, is hereby specifically designated as being a deteriorated area and is eligible to participate in this tax exemption program, so long as it meets the prerequisites for the program and here and after described. The following real estate tax exemption schedule shall commence January 1st of the tax year immediately following the year in which the city of Scranton issues an occupancy permit issued on the property owned by Scranton Housing Authority and Hilltop Heights LP, located at 900 Saginaw Street in the city of Scranton, and identified as PIN number 16718-030-990, approximately 24.6 acres. The County of Lackawanna, as a result of the increase in the tax assessment for the property attributed to the cost of future improvements constructed thereon, exempts as follows. For 10 years, 100% of the eligible assessment for which the newly constructed improvement would otherwise be taxable shall be exempted. Taxes on previously existing improvements shall not be exempted. The exemption from taxes granted under this resolution shall be upon the newly constructed improvement of the deteriorating property. This resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption.
Thank you. Here to speak on this is Don Fredrickson, the County Solicitor.
Good morning, Commissioners. Before you is an authorization to approve a LERTA. It's for a 24-acre parcel of property. It's owned by the Scranton Housing Authority, and they're going to lease that property to Hilltop Heights LP to construct an affordable housing units on there. Thirty-six units it'll be comprised of. The city has already granted LERTA, and the school district has also granted LERTA. The advantage to the county in granting this is because the property is owned by the authority, it's non-taxable. However, once this company builds these units, they become taxable. So we're going to give them 10 years of tax exemption on the LERTA program, but then for the next 40 years, because they're doing a 50-year lease, for the next 40 years, they'll be paying taxes on the improvement, which we generally would not get if the authority built it themselves, we would receive nothing. So there'll be a 40-year period where we'll actually be able to collect taxes on the improvement.
Okay, very good. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0185.
This is authorizing Lackawanna County RASA and VOJO grant. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the District Attorney's Office submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the 2025-2026 Lackawanna County Victim and Witness Rights and Services Act, and also the Victims of Juvenile Offenders Crime Grant, in the amount of $126,907 and $23,553. And with us today is Donna Cirillo.
Good morning. With this grant, it's a non-competitive grant through Pennsylvania Crime and Delinquency out of Harrisburg. It is the second year of a two-year grant that we receive for years, and it helps benefit the six advocates, part salary and part benefits.
Any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you very much. Resolution 25-0186.
Accepting the proposal from Granicus. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby accept the proposal from the Granicus Legisstar Agenda Management System. One-year agreement to commence August 1st, 2025, and expire July 31st, 2026, at a cost of $39,509.33.
Thank you. Tracy, you want to just explain what this is?
Okay. So, back in 2008, we put out an RFQ for an Agenda Management System. This was the winning proposal, and this is what we use to draft all of our contracts, all of our legislations, post the agendas online in the minutes. And it's, the cost has only gone up incrementally over the years. Just for an example, in '22, '23, it was $30,000. For 2023, '24, it was $32,000, and last year it was $35,000. So it's, the price, the price has not increased that drastically.
Okay, very good. And this is so that everything, all of this, all the backup legislation, if you were to go on the county's website, you could see this as soon as the agenda's posted. Look at all the legislation, everything that we're voting on, you have the ability to see, review, and then ask questions about. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0187.
This is awarding the Active Directory Login Solution. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby award the Active Directory Login Solution for the Bio-Badged Computer Access to Improvada Enterprise, and accept the three-year proposal at a cost of $182,372. And here today is Mike Brown.
Good morning, Commissioners. This contract is going to help in several different ways. Currently, right now, as you understand, now, security is a paramount item in securing data. Recently, the DOJ has requested two-factor authentication within the prison. This is a solution that will provide that, as well as making sure that individuals that are working within the prison can actually stay active, because with the multi-factor authentication that they'll be using, they'll be using their actual physical badge, as well as their fingers to log in. So this way, there's pure accountability of anybody that's accessing or using data.
And can you explain what's happening now, and what has kind of spurred this? And explain what two-factor authentication is? Because I don't think-
Sure. As many people have right now with their banks, they're, in order to secure their transfers and their access in, they provided a method of you just logging in as one factor, and a second is a security code that's being sent out to you through your phone and other appliances. Well, inside the prison, you are not allowed to actually have your cellphones in there for obvious reasons. So by using your fingerprints as one point and their badge, two requirements that employees need to have and actually to work, so this way, make it simple and easy for anyone to actually connect into our systems.
Any questions for Director Brown?
No.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0188.
This is accepting a quote from CDW. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby accept the quote from CDW for the Adobe Acrobat Pro and Adobe Creative Cloud at a cost of $40,369.38.
Again, Commissioner, this is an application that currently various departments within the county actually use, and we've started this contract. It's an annual agreement since Adobe went to more of a subscription versus a license count, so that you just pay once and you just use forever. We have about six or eight different departments that are actually using this for their day-to-day work, from creating Adobe Document Signed items, so this way they can track those items, to editing PDFs and things of that nature.
Very good. Any questions for Director Brown? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you. Resolution 25-0191.
This is accepting the proposal from Eaton UPS Service. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby accept the proposal from Eaton UPS Service for service and maintenance of batteries at the 911 Emergency Services Center to extend serviceable life to at least January 1st of 2035, at a cost of $94,914.60. And here today is Al Carney.
How you doing? Good morning. So this, our Eaton UPS system, which is our battery backup system, I was made aware of this summer that it's end of life January 1st, 2027, and it'll be best effort. So they have a program where they're going to come in, replace all the components of the UPS, fans, motors, electronics, capacitors, everything but batteries, which we purchased about two and a half years ago. So we have about three years of life left on those. This will extend the life of the unit by 10 years. I did ask a quote if I was to replace the, a new unit, just for the unit itself would be $300,000 plus installation. So this is definitely the way to go. Eaton is the manufacturer. It will be all Eaton certified technicians. We'll have a yearly maintenance that they come in and they perform maintenance on it every year, so.
Explain, too, that's, that's-
That saved us a few- Yeah, in the last two years, we've had two different power outages. One where the generator didn't transfer the power, and we ran on our battery backup where we kept the 911 center and our equipment in the back room running for four hours while we had the generator repaired, which we only had about five hours. So it was, it was under the gun. And this second time, about a month ago, there was a power outage after the generator, after the transfer switch, and the battery backup kicked in, and it gave us time to figure out where the problem was, and we found the panel that tripped, and we were able to reset it, but it kept the 911 center fully operational, the back room. We didn't have lights, or we didn't have some of the other things, but everything that's hooked to it has to do with 911, so.
Very cool. And this amount was not budgeted for, but we're going to pull it from a capital account.
A capital account. Now, it is fundable through our 83% funding.
Oh, okay.
You know, so that we receive from the state, but we need the funds from the capital, you know, to kind of, yeah, so.
Okay.
So it is a fundable item through Pima.
Okay.
In the 83%.
Very good.
All right.
Any questions for Director Carney? Okay, thank you. We entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0192.
This is entering into an agreement with Educational Data Systems. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby award the Workforce Development Board's Provision of Payroll Services for the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families Grant to Educational Data Systems Incorporated, commencing July 1st, 2025, and expiring June 30th, 2026. And here today is Virginia Torono.
Good morning, Commissioners. This resolution will allow for the provision of payroll services for up to 80 youth between the ages of 14 and 24 in work experience and internship positions under the Workforce Development Board's Temporary Assistance for Needy Family Grants. The service was procured through a formal request for quotation process. Educational Data Systems, Inc. was the only respondent. They have been our previous and our current provider for these services with no issues. Their fee is minimal, it's 5% of the actual wages and fringe benefits of the participants. And most importantly, it's 100% grant funded, no cost to the county.
Very good. Any questions for Director Torono? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0193.
This is requesting an extension to the federal fiscal year 2021 CDBG block grant contract. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby request that the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development grant an extension of the federal fiscal year 2021 CDBG contract through October 31st, 2026. And the Board reaffirms its commitment to supporting the successful completion of the projects, ensuring responsible management and effective utilization of federal CDBG resources for community benefit. And whereas, the county has complied with all applicable federal, state, and citizen participation requirements in administering the CDBG funds, and that the county has complied with the terms of Pennsylvania Act 179, and has met all citizen participation requirements in connection with the above-mentioned modifications. Here we have Krista Magnata.
Thank you. This resolution formally requests an extension of fiscal year 2020 CDBG funds. The goal is to extend the contract deadline from February 17th to October 31st of 2026 due to valid construction season limitations, regulatory approval timelines, and environmental compliance delays. There are no financial or programmatic drawbacks. The extension supports compliance with HUD's timeliness standards while recognizing practical project delays, minimizing risk of recapturing the funds. So realistically, what it is, is that if projects are due to be completed in February, usually you lose the months of November through February due to not being able to pave or do curb cuts, or do some projects that may be outdoors. So this extension would help us, and it would be well within our five-year limits of the HUD financing through DCED for us to still meet the project, the project deadlines, and complete the projects and not have to give any money back to the state or to the federal government.
Very good. Any questions for Director Magnata? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0194.
Approving CDBG modifications and revisions. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the submissions of modifications and revisions of the Community Development Block Grant Program to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. For Dixon City Borough, federal fiscal year 2020, the modification reduces the Bernard-Saminsky Park Development Project by $15,000 and reallocates said $15,000 to the new ADA Curb Cuts Project for Accessibility Improvements. Clark Summit Borough, federal fiscal year 2021, the modification eliminates the Hillside Senior Center paving project, reduces the housing rehabilitation program by $64,000, and reallocates the total of $78,000 to the Hillside Pavilion Project under senior handicapped improvements. Be it further resolved that the county has complied with the terms of Pennsylvania Act 179 and has met all citizen participation requirements in connection with the above-mentioned modifications.
Thank you. This legislation facilitates proposed modifications to fiscal year 2020 and 2021 CDBG project allocations for said projects in Dixon City and Clark Summit Borough. This legislation is very important, because the Dixon City Borough project with the 2020 funds is actually due to be complete of September 25th of this year. And Clark Summit Borough, at this particular point in time, is due in the February, which we just asked for an extension for. And these projects, of course, are no cost to the county.
Very good. Any questions for Director Magnata? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0195.
Ratifying the Submission and Award of a Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Grant Application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on behalf of the Tech Ridge Expansion Project with SLIPCO. Whereas, the Tech Ridge Expansion Project entails the renovations and expansion of an existing property to provide additional economic development and technological workspace in Lackawanna County. And whereas, the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program funds as a source to finance the project. And whereas, Tech Ridge, SLIPCO, have proposed that the county assist Tech Ridge in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. And whereas, the county desires to assist Tech Ridge in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. Whereas, Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept an award in the amount of $930,000 related to these Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program funds. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to accept an application to an award in the amount of $930,000 from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Grant on behalf of Tech Ridge and SLIPCO for the Tech Ridge Expansion Project.
Thank you. As was stated, this was for both acceptance of the RCAP award, as well as ratification of submittal for the Tech Ridge SLIPCO project, which is the Scranton Chamber. The award is $930,000, and we get a 1% administration fee for administering the RCAP projects. This project is for renovation and expansion of the Tech Ridge property, and- of the Tech Ridge property, and this is, of course, no cost to the county.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Magnata? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you. Resolution twenty-five dash zero one nine six.
Entering into an agreement with the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority. Be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement for professional services with the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority for routine maintenance service for the Lackawanna River Heritage Trail to commence April first, 2025, and in March thirty-first, 2026. The authority will remit to the county the annual sum of twenty-five thousand dollars for services.
Hello, Paul Bechtel with the Parks and Rec Department. This is the annual contract with the Lackawanna, to do maintenance on Lackawanna River Heritage Trail, which is a major asset in the county. Back when I was a consultant, we worked on a plan to get it through Muzik, so hopefully that'll happen in the future. But that's just basically our annual contract, where we have the individuals from each of the parks. They go down, do maintenance on specific sections along the heritage trail.
Paul, just out of curiosity, how would it connect to, where would it connect to Muzik, by Davis Street there?
No, we would come down through Old Forge, and then transect over behind the Little League Field down here, and try to, parts of it are going to have to go on the main street. And then we had some ideas and plans to even do some restoration on a couple creeks down here, to try to do a restoration project that also leverages money through the state for mine reclamation, as well as recreational space. So it's a little tricky down here because of a lot of development, but on some spots, there'll be share of the road, and it'll be trying to connect up valley.
Very good. Okay, any questions for Director Bechtel? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution twenty-five dash zero one nine nine.
Entering into a service agreement. Be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a service agreement with Beach Lake Sprinkler Fire Protection Services for a fire suppression system in the IT computer room at a cost of nine thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Here to.
Mark Doer.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. How are you? Yeah, this is the IT room up on the fifth floor. So there's a cleaning agent that goes in if everybody sees the drop ceilings and everything like that. In our rack room, in our crack room, they call it, both sides, one box communicates with the other box. So as a disagreement, they're going to replace the one box that is no longer useful, and they're going to replace it with a new one. So you only have fifteen seconds for the actuator from the one room to the other room to be activated. So this is just a specialty for Beach Lake to do on replacing the batteries, and we can't do anything in a house. So we suggest that you pass this so we could do replacement next month or the month after.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Doer? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Okay, thank you.
The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you. Resolution twenty-five dash zero one nine seven.
This is an appointment to the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority. Be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority. Gerard Garrity of Scranton, term to begin immediately and expire on December thirty-first, 2028.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution twenty-five dash zero two zero one.
This is an appointment to the Lackawanna County Planning Commission. Be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby reappoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Planning Commission. Chet Merly of Peckville, term to begin immediately and expire December thirty-first, 2028.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. I'll entertain a motion to award the prison stair replacement project to T. Brennan Heavy Equipment, sixty-six Crystal Lake Road, Fell Township, the lowest, most responsible bidder, at two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
Motion.
Been a motion, and a second. On the question, here to speak on this is County Engineer Frank Suma. Frank?
Good morning, everyone. This is a budgeted capital improvement project for the prison. The, the project would correct the deteriorated steps and vestibule at the original front entrance to, on North Washington. The existing stone steps have settled and are cracked and deteriorating, and rainwater, because of the settled steps, is now entering into the front vestibule under the front door, causing to, causing the vestibule floor framing to further deteriorate as well. Short-term repairs were tried in the past, but the issue still persists. This would be a permanent, long-term solution, including rebuilding the foundation for the steps. Public bid was conducted, and two bids were received. The low bidder was T. Brennan Heavy Equipment at a price of two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. The cost for the project has been budgeted in current capital improvement funds earmarked for the prison. And because of all those reasons, it is our recommendation that the project be awarded to T. Brennan.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Suma? Okay, I'll entertain a motion, or I'm sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion has been approved. Thank you. Okay, now is the opportunity for the public to address the board. Just make sure, when you come up to the microphone, you state your first and last name, and where you live, and you have five minutes. Tracy will be keeping the time, and will that have an alarm on it? You'll hear an alarm when your, your five minutes has expired. Okay, thank you. Anyone who would like to come up?
Bobola, Scranton. You know, I'm looking here with this reassessment that's turned into a joke. The people there are highly incompetent. You put a reassessment out there with people that are doing this. I've already filed a lawsuit, and it's going to turn into a class action suit, because this is just totally ridiculous with this Tyler Industries and the people they're putting in here, former FBI agents, and all this nonsense. It's a joke, and I'm going to tell you why it's a joke. Thanks to your help, Mr. Gahan, the county reassessed the church. I own on my side there, the holy, former Holy Cross Church. It was originally up for two hundred dollars. They were going to tear it down by the city. I paid thirty-five thousand and bought the church to preserve our culture. There's a hundred and some thousand they assessed me on in taxes. These idiots now come along, and have now reassessed it at three point one million dollars. So what I'm here to do today, because of what's taken place from the county, I'm here to offer you this church for two point five million dollars, where you got a hell of a savings, and turn it into a clinic for PTSD, and those in need of medical treatment outside of the facilities that are out there. It'd be a great place for them to go. It was a house of God, and I think it's an ideal location to take. And I'm asking the Commissioners to approve purchasing this facility now, that Tyler Industries and your people out there appraise it at three point one million dollars. And I'm willing to turn it over to you for making a hell of a profit on it for yourselves. Let's take it a step further. With the reassessment, I've already filed a tax lawsuit against the tax that you put in, and the reassessment, and it's going to get overturned. You can't turn around and do what you're doing to the people with these ridiculous, ridiculous appraisals, and I just proved that. Furthermore, what I've seen going on in this county is you, sir, were at a King's Rally. You stood there and said your name was Bill Gahan, County Commissioner. Well, you weren't acting as a commissioner. You were acting as a private citizen with children. My understanding is, when you become a commissioner or a councilperson, that's who you are. And I believe when you made that statement, when you said you're not acting as a commissioner, and you are a commissioner, you're sworn in here, I believe you resigned as a commissioner from Lackawanna County when you made that statement. And I'm going to pursue it in the courts, because you're all over the ballpark. And to insult all of us, for you to stand there and say you're not a commissioner, is a slap in the face of all those that pointed you there. Because a commissioner's a commissioner, and if you're that ashamed to stand up there and say you're a commissioner in that King's Rally, which was another joke, and the idiots in this community, and I'm going to tell you a little more. Yesterday was Sergeant William Ginnott's Day in Lackawanna County, and it was approved by the county commissioners. Sergeant Ginnott was the marine photographer to film the flag raising on Mount Suribachi on Iwo Jima. In seventeen, the Commissioners have made, May fifth, Sergeant Ginnott's Day in Lackawanna County. And the reason he's in Lackawanna County, because of my efforts to bring him home. I've been to that island three times, searching for his body, and I believe now I've located the cave where he and two other Marines are still buried in there. And our government just turned a blind eye to our veterans. Our fellow vets need to come home. They need to be respected. But seeing you standing there honestly turned my stomach, to see you stand up and go against the people in this community, against our President of the United States. Now, I know you were a participant with the other loser that was in there, Biden, that you named streets after him on the interstate. We're in the process of removing all them. But for you to stand there and say you were not a commissioner, and not represent us. Thank you, and I hope you do stand down without going through the court order.
Sure, thanks. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Marilyn French. I live at one sixteen Columbia Street in Muzik, and I just wanted to thank you for holding your meeting in Muzik. And I also wanted to thank you for the investment in the paving on Montage Mountain. That is a major improvement up there. It looks really beautiful. And I also wanted to say thank you to you and to Kristin for the economic development study that finally came to a head. I wasn't able to attend your meeting where you presented the findings, but we are digging through them, and there's a lot of low-hanging fruit there that I think we'll be able to coordinate with you on and be supportive to help get some of that across the finish line and be great partners. So I just appreciate your attention to Montage Mountain. It's a big deal for Muzik Borough and for us down here, and looking forward to what's next on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Hi, Michelle Tierney, Glenburn Township. I want to commend both of you again for the appeal process and the reassessments. I have actually set in an appeal personally, myself, with my home, my property. And the process, although it has been a challenge, it is very transparent, and it is an opportunity for all of us, community members, that property owners, to look at our reassessment, find out whether or not it is accurate, talk to our neighbors, which we have done, and fill out the forms, set up an appointment. And it is working incredibly well at this time. There will be certainly appeals and processes and assessments that are inaccurate, but the transparency and the communication that you've shared, and the people that you've put into place to set up these appointments, I believe, has been an incredible gift for our county. It is a well-needed process, and it has been a daunting process, and I commend all of you for all the hard work you've done and the transparency. My other question is, you've approved a lot of contracts today with security, data, batteries. Is there any state grant money that you receive from that? And without a state budget, are you going to struggle with paying for all these contracts that you just approved?
Specifically, what Al Carney was talking about, with the batteries could be back-funded through Pima. But where we're really having, going to have a difficult time, the longer the budget goes on, is funding for human services. That's our biggest cost by far. And as that budget continues to, there continues to be a stalemate. As we get closer to the end of the year here, you know, we're praying to God that they pass the budget, because we'll be in between a rock and a hard place.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else like to address the board?
Hello, my name is Angela Ramon. I'm a resident of Scranton. And I'm here today as a part of an organization, NEPA Stands Up. I am the chairperson of the Housing Committee there. And I'm here today to speak to you all about a anti-discrimination ordinance for Lackawanna County. Unlike several other counties across Pennsylvania, Lackawanna County to this day has not adopted any county-wide anti-discrimination policies or protections for the LGBTQ community. And we've been missing out on a lot as a result of that. I know that personally, myself, because there are no protections outside of a few zip codes, namely Scranton, Dixon City, and Pittston in our area, and Wokes Bear as well, I've been locked out of opportunities for jobs, housing, healthcare, oftentimes explicitly by people who have the legal right, as of right now, to deny me services, to deny me housing, to deny me employment that I'm perfectly qualified for, entirely because of their own feelings about my sexuality or my gender. And I don't think that that's a good thing for people like me, but I know that it's also a terrible situation for the county as a whole to be in. Because when we look at, when we look at places in our own areas, like Scranton, like Wokes Bear, that have protections in place, right, they often host some of the largest events that our area has ever seen. Like, if we look at the Electric City Tattoo Convention, which is, I believe, the single largest gathering that happens in our entire metro area, that happens in Scranton. It's a city that's had protections for LGBTQ people since the nineties. And the people who show up there, both the businesses that show up for those conventions, and the people who show up as attendees, go there in part because they know that they're not going to be subjected to harassment, to questioning about the way that they present themselves. They don't have to worry that someone's going to call the police on them for using a bathroom that they're, that they should be in, right? And when they know that there's that safety in places like Scranton, that's where those events happen. And when we look at other large events in our area, like, like with the Pride Fest in Wokes Bear, every single year, it's breaking records for the largest outdoor gathering to happen in Wokes Bear. Every single year, it's gaining more and more popularity. And it's because Wokes Bear is a city that has explicitly stated they are going to protect their LGBTQ-plus residents. And I believe that Lackawanna County as a whole is really missing out on opportunities like, like that, both for the residents themselves who are queer, or even those who would like to move here and have opportunities to make a life for themselves in our area. But also, the county as a whole is missing out. And I do think that with the way that protections are currently not present here, like I had mentioned, I have been denied housing, jobs, and healthcare in our area as a result of these protections not being in place. It has de facto segregated me from most places in Lackawanna County outside of Scranton and Dixon City. I'm not able to, if I wanted to go move to a place like Blakely, or, or Hall of Fame, or Dunmore even, I can be legally denied jobs and housing and services there. And I just don't think that's a good thing for anybody. There are several other speakers from NEPA Stands Up who will be coming up today, so they're going to follow up on some other things that I talked about. But yeah, that's what I wanted to talk about today. Thank you much, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board?
As promised. Hi, my name is Holly Ord. I am the local organizer for NEPA Stands Up, and I'm also a Scranton resident. And I'm here to echo the urgent need for a non-discrimination policy for Lackawanna County. I would like to point out that if this meeting today were held in downtown Scranton, there is a non-discrimination policy in effect there that protects people from discrimination of all kinds, regardless of who they are or who they love. But a ten-minute drive away just to Muzik, to Muzik, there is no non-discrimination. there is no non-discrimination policy here, and it's 10 minutes away. It is unconscionable that the only areas in Lackawanna County with a non-discrimination ordinance are Scranton and Dixon City. And I believe that everybody is welcome in Lackawanna County, regardless of who you are, your gender, your sexuality. You should feel accepted and safe and free to be who you are and celebrated. And that is why we need a countywide non-discrimination ordinance. And I would like you to urge you to implement that, a very similar one to Scranton. Thank you so much.
Sir?
Good morning. My name is Frankie Malacaria, former Scranton City Council candidate and proud member of NEPA Stands Up. I want to echo what some of my friends were just saying about the need for non-discrimination policy. This would take effect as the Lackawanna County Human Relations Commission. Currently, there is no such commission, and we would like to see that be brought to our county. As it was mentioned, Scranton and Dixon City both have municipal-wide human relations commissions, and the state does have a human relations commission. Because of the size and all the number, the significant proportion of counties that don't have a non-discrimination policy, the state policy, the state's commission can sometimes get very overloaded. So we want to be able to bring a human relations commission on the countywide level that would be able to best serve our neighbors here. I'm a resident of Scranton. There are huge swaths of the city that border towns that do not have a policy like this. I believe that our neighbors deserve the same rights that we have in Scranton, and that there's no reason for discrimination to be okay in one of the jurisdictions, but not another jurisdiction in our county. While we're updating the policy, it's important to keep in mind current best practices and to include additional protected classes that are missed out in Scranton's Human Relations Commission. I think this is a great opportunity to bring it in line with other counties that have recently updated or introduced updated policies, like Lehigh County. So we'd like to work with you guys in the future to try to bring a policy like this to Lackawanna County. Willing to set up a meeting with y'all to talk about what other counties around our state are doing and how we can bring our county in line with others. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to address the board?
Good morning. My name is Alec Walker Serrano. I'm a resident of Binghamton, New York, but I volunteer and work in Lackawanna County. I'm also a member of NEPA Stands Up. I chair our Queer Liberation Committee. I've done so for the past three years now. And I also now work for Pennsylvania Stands Up as their traditional communications organizer. And I'm here to speak in support of a non-discrimination ordinance. Very much like my colleagues who got up here already, I think it's really important that we consider the fact that if you're a couple minutes away, even maybe down the block, right? Taylor and Scranton border each other, but if you're over that line and you're in Taylor, you're not explicitly protected by a non-discrimination ordinance. It's really important for us to consider the difference between protections via Supreme Court ruling versus protections that are actually codified. Legal precedent can always be overturned. Executive orders are coming out on the daily. And there are legislators in our state legislature who are actively trying to erase and make life more difficult for people simply because they're different. I know that NEPA is a welcoming and accepting place. I was born and raised in Lackawanna County, but I experienced discrimination here when I was in school, when I was looking for housing as somebody who was fleeing a domestic violence situation. And implementing a non-discrimination ordinance in Lackawanna County, you could solve all of those problems. I want to specifically highlight Lehigh County. Lehigh County in 2024 passed one of the most inclusive non-discrimination ordinances in the country. I'm going to repeat that. Lehigh Valley has one of the most progressive non-discrimination ordinances in the entire country, and they should be very proud of that. It protects everybody. It really thinks about everyone, including people who are disabled, people who are LGBTQ, folks who are victims of domestic violence. Literally any single thing that you could think of that someone might be discriminated against for, they've included that. They've really considered every single one of their neighbors, and I believe that we should do that in Lackawanna County as well. I have so many friends here who are transgender, who have experienced discrimination in housing, simply because their name that they go by in everyday life doesn't match what is on their paperwork. And that's completely unfair. So I really want to urge you to consider this. I wanted to print out Lehigh Valley's actual ordinance to present to you today, but unfortunately I was having some technical difficulties with my printer. But I would be happy to send it to you, Gahan, and Chair Mac, so that you can take a look at what that looks like. The only thing that I would ask for your consideration is to also include housing status as a protected class. We have witnessed our homeless neighbors be criminalized, discriminated against countless times. I've personally witnessed it. Homeless folks going into a business where they have money to suspend, to get something to eat, to buy a coffee, and they're refused service simply because of the way that they look. Simply because people assume this person is houseless, I don't want you in my place of business. People don't choose to become houseless. I personally have experienced homelessness because of being in a domestic violence situation and having to flee. And I think that I deserved the right to go into sheets and buy myself something with the few dollars I had at that point in time. So with all of that said, thank you so much for hearing us out on this. We will definitely be back. We would love to have more face-to-face, one-on-one conversations with both of you about the importance of a non-discrimination ordinance, because we have many folks who would be directly positively impacted by it, who weren't able to show up today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board? Sir?
I just have a few comments about, oh, Frank Sierra Feeny, Music, Pennsylvania. I have a few comments. One is, what information is available for the multifamily housing project that's going to be built on the mountain by Glen Mara there, Montage Mountain Road? It's supposedly a slipco project with 230 residents available, and we have no idea as to what's happening with it. And we feel that if it turns into what we consider to be a Section 8 low-cost or, you know, immigrant housing, it will deteriorate the value of your property. And before the assessment hearings, it would be nice to have an idea as to what is going to happen with that. The other thing I have is, recently I had to power wash my driveway and my deck. Eight hours, well, seven hours, two power washers going, four gallons a minute, and I'm going to be paying a sewer bill for that. And my sewer bill's already eight and $900 a month, or every two months. The other issue I have with the assessment is that when you want to reassess, I'm told that your scheduled date cannot be changed. Well, in a number of instances, your appraiser isn't available for two to four weeks. I have an engineer coming from New Jersey to assess my air conditioning system because he was familiar with it years ago, 20 years ago. And he's not available for almost a month. And then I have a real estate appraiser, and this is a reason I feel a lot of people aren't appealing, because a a real estate appraiser costs between $1,000 to $1,500 per property. And most people just can't afford that. And legal fees to be represented by an attorney, because most people are skeptical about appearing on their own, especially with the research that's necessary, can cause, I have no idea how much, but about $250 an hour, I'm guessing, would be the low end. And the Vesper Warehouse could consider to be a problem for the residents in the Glen Mara area with regard to traffic. I know we have a traffic situation on Davis Street because of the marijuana facility, which is probably the most popular business in Lackawanna County at this point on a Friday and Saturday. I didn't realize there were so many beautiful young people who want to buy marijuana, but they must really be having a good time. Anyway, it's become a problem because the traffic is unbelievable there. Between Dunkin' Donuts and Ascend, it's, the lineup sometimes goes all the way back to the intersection. And I am hoping that there might be some leeway with regard, finally, with regard to rescheduling your appearance for your assessment hearing. Because like I said, I won't have all my information for, I don't know how long, as long as this, I need the engineer from Jersey. I have a lot of people who want to come, a contractor's got to make an assessment on some problems I have, and it's hard to even find them anymore. And appraisers are so busy, they're almost impossible to find. So you're paying a premium. And I thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Mark, did I do that okay? Can you hear me? Gary, how we doing on the tally for the reassessment? Are you doing a tally, or didn't you start doing that on costs?
We haven't taken on that charge in our office.
I asked last time I was at the meeting, so I was just wondering, so you're not going to do that, or?
Yeah, I mean,
Okay, I'll do my stuff.
I don't know if that's under our purview. I would, I would refer to maybe Don Fredericksson regarding if that's something our office-
Finance would probably have those numbers as opposed, you know.
I have a good idea already, but I don't want to take up much more of my time. So I see you just voted for another backdoor tax for the taxpayers, $15. Everybody says that's $15. So I guess my question would be, are you going to allocate that for each borough that pays it? So if you have a house in Music that has a deed, that $15 is going to be allocated for Music only? How is that money going to be allocated throughout the county? If you can answer afterwards, I'd appreciate it, Commissioner. Sorry, these people have me all flustered here. There's 8,600, in the paper, they're saying 8,600 people showed up at the previous meetings for Tyler, and then over 4,000 for the current. So you have 12,000, which isn't a lot of people. But in my street alone, just in the 500 block of Old Forge, there was five houses right around me that went up for sale and were sold. Because when they got those assessments in the mail, they were quadruple of what their home was actually assessed at, because now you look at your tax bill and it says 12,000, 15,000, that's not the assessment. You're supposed to times that by 16 in order to get how much your house is actually worth. But people don't understand the way it works. So they were thinking that their house is now worth that amount of money and trying to sell it. There's for-sale signs everywhere in Old Forge. You'll drive through and you'll see them through Music too. But they're going to be disappointed because they're not going to get that praise. Let's see. They just, I lost my entire train of thought because of what just came up here a couple times. Oh, that's what I wanted to know. In the county building, you moved a lot of people over to the new building we're going to have for the Health Department where it was going to be. So I loved that building for the taxes, I have to say. Jerry Nateriani, thank you, I love it. Because I like that drive-through, but CYS is going to be over there, Commissioner Gahan, right?
Correct.
Okay, so what are you doing with the entire floor where CYS was?
Well, aging is, the Department of Aging is still there. We'll probably expand their footprint a little bit because the space that they're in really isn't conducive to confidential phone calls that they have to have with families and things like that. So we don't have a set plan 100% yet, but that's kind of where we're headed.
Okay, because there's a lot of space there. I was wondering why you didn't just use space that we have. And you don't have to answer now because I'm, it's my time, so I don't want to do any more. I don't even know where we're at with my time. So we went over to the mall, we spent another $300,000 plus their salaries. And I just disagree with all that, but I expect that from the Democrat administration, not the Republican. That's all I'll say on that matter. As for an ordinance on LGBTQ, I came to this meeting last time complaining because Scranton is its own mess, okay? This is the county. So there's all kinds of boroughs that disagree and agree, and we get to do what we want because that's freedom in America. So they don't have to be told by the county, you have to do this. So if they want to choose to do something like that, fine. But for the county to try and dictate to all the boroughs that they have to follow some non-discrimination for something that's completely against their religion and against what they believe in is ridiculous. And for anybody to come here and ask for that to happen is saying their freedom is more important than everybody else's, which is not true, and it shouldn't happen here. And children are being hurt. Women are being denied trophies and scholarships. And I don't want that here. Everybody knows my stand on this issue. The children are being harmed by drugs. They should not be given these drugs. Their bodies shouldn't be destroyed. They shouldn't be sterilized. These poor kids are being mentally abused by the medical community, which I'm a part of. And I disagree with it completely. So thank you, that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
I'll join up on you on the assessment.
Okay.
I read it.
Great, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Hard act of all. No, just once, sorry. But we'll be back before the end of the month. Nobody? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chirmack?
Well, Ferris, thanks Music Borough for having us here today. Appreciate the hospitality. And I think the chief disappeared, but his new building for the fire department is coming along, and it's looking great. So looking forward to seeing that when it's complete. I know one of the things we passed here today was for grants for curb cuts and things like that in Clark Suma and Dixon City. Last week, we had a meeting with the Lackawanna County Disability Action Committee. We had it at the Trolley Museum, open to the public. It was a great meeting, along with Keith Williams, who heads up that committee, talked about all the things that we are doing here at the county, things that they assist us with. So we're constantly in conversation with them to help make things more accessible for people with disabilities. So it was, it was a good meeting. And the county does do a lot for them, and, you know, we're always looking for more input. So with our parks and different areas, you know, we're always trying to make improvements. So that was, that was a good meeting. Also over the weekend was our 20th Annual, or the 20, not ours, but the 20th Annual Jazz Festival. That was headed up by Marco Marsenko. And if anybody came down to that over the weekend, it was a great, great event. The weather was just perfect. The restaurants and it was just, everybody was busy. It was, it was a fun time. So I encourage everyone next year, if you haven't been there, to come out to it. It's a great, great event. So thank you, Marco Marsenko, again, for that. The reassessment, the appeals have started. So we're, you know, I'm going to be watching, we had about 4,200 appeals. So we're going to see, you know, I want to, I want to see what happens when the results start coming in. I'll start getting those hopefully weekly. I'll be able to see, you know, what the boards have done, if they've made corrections, if they've made any changes to these assessed values. Because I want to see what, you know, what my thoughts are and what Tyler Technologies has done and made sure that their figures are correct or incorrect. So until we start seeing some of these results, you know, then I can start looking at that. I think there's still going to be some issues. I know once the bills come out next year, there's going to be a lot more appeals, so that'll be another issue. But, you know, right now, I want to see how this goes. Commercial properties were issues, vacant land was issues. And these corrections, you know, are going to have to be made. So hopefully, we can get through this stuff. You know, I was an advocate for trying to hold this up a little bit. You know, give us another six months to go through appeals, make sure these properties are assessed properly so that we can make the correct millage adjustments and start off on the right foot. So, you know, again, I'm going to be watching that very close. Also, the other issue with moving forward is I need to know that there's going to be safeguards in place for some of our elderly. I can't have people losing their homes because their taxes got too unaffordable. So there are processes- So there are processes that are available that we can do, that other counties do. We can do tax freezes. There's a list of things that can be done. So there's still some things there that I want to consider and I want to look at before we implement anything from here on out. We're in the budget season now, so we're going over all the departments' budgets. We'll be looking at those very closely, as I've done for the past six years. Once we get the preliminary budget, my team will go through it and we'll take a look at what we think is good, not good, where adjustments could be made, where some savings, if not we can recommend, if there's any cuts that we think we can do. And I'll be working along with our CFO. So that's a process. So, and right now, there's two of us. So for the budget to pass, we have to agree on it. And we've been working together here. Hopefully, we can find common ground moving forward with the budget, but that's going to be very important, and I know Bill's looking at it, too. So the two of us are really, really going to dive into that and go over every single line. And this is for the taxpayers. That's who we work for. That's the money that we spend every day. It belongs to everyone here. So again, we're going to be working on that, and we'll just see how things go. But right now, things are smooth. We'll see what happens in the future if we get a third person, and how things go from there on. But again, we are doing everything we can to run this county as smoothly as possible. It's not an easy challenge some days, but again, we work for everyone, and we're doing the best that we can. And I think that we're going to get through this, and we're going to make things better here, and again, try to save wherever we can, and just try to make sure that the people that have concerns over these appeals and what their taxes could possibly be, I hope that we can solve some of these issues. So we're working on it. So thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. There were several speakers who got up today and discussed the non-discrimination ordinance, Human Relations Commission, and what other counties do, which I appreciate you coming here and talking about that. Don, can you look into that and just report back to Commissioner Chermack and I on the law on that and what that looks like, what they did down in Lehigh County, and so on and so forth? Okay. Thank you. Okay, excuse me. Okay, I just want to give an update on the paving project in Music, and then they'll be moving right after that into Blakely and Archibald. So I spoke this morning to Larry Lukasik, who's the head of our Roads and Bridges Department. The rail riders were at home most of last week, and with the paving restrictions in place on game days, it was not really productive for them to try to finish the last of the pavement on Montage Mountain. So they went and started another job paving on the expressway, which they're scheduled to finish tomorrow. They are then coming back to finish off the paving on Montage Mountain. They will be there on Friday and finish up most likely on Monday of next week. After that, they will immediately move to Main Avenue and Blakely. The handicap ramps on Main Avenue are scheduled to start next week, with milling and paving scheduled to start at Keystone Avenue on Monday, August 18. They'll continue until finished by early to mid-September. So that's two updates on the paving project here, which is going to be done next week, and then they'll move to Blakely. There's also a pre-construction meeting with the contractor that is doing the stormwater improvements in Carbondale, another county project on Gordon Avenue that's scheduled on August 18. He's scheduled to start that project on Monday, August 25. So we're making progress there. The only other thing I want to mention today is the Lackawanna County 3-on-3 basketball tournament was held July 25 and July 26 in downtown Scranton, another very successful event despite the heat. That is thanks to our county's Parks Department Director Paul Bechtel, who's here today, and Frank Stevens, the deputy director, who also supplied a free hydration station for the players, our maintenance department director, Mark Dewar, and his staff, who were involved in the setup and breakdown of the event, community relations department director, Mark Cordelli, Kristin Schimmelfinnig and J.J. Perron, and Erica Neal, and who all went above and beyond to assist with the event, and our communications department did a great job in promoting it, and it went really, really well. Also, the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Wednesday, August 20, at 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners' fifth-floor boardroom at the County Government Center, 123 Wyoming Avenue. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second on the question, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.